We're going to get started with our legislative work session. First, let me thank everyone for attending today. We will go ahead, everyone should have an agenda. I am going to ask, just for the benefit of everyone, all of our respective delegation and our governing body, so that we can just introduce ourselves pretty quickly around the table, so we can go ahead and get started. I'll start here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Marcy Rubinson with Holland and Knight. I have represented the city as the city's lobbyist up at the state capital for the last several years. Very proud of some of the accomplishments that we've gotten for the city, including the C-SWAS to fund the new arena, and I hope to continue that relationship moving forward. You have a lot of exciting things on your legislative agenda.
Commissioner Ryan Gilfoul.
Commissioner Francis Sky.
I'm Daniel Dunlap, 911 Director.
Evan Joseph, Ward and RRCI.
Good afternoon, Administrator, Interim Finance Director.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Rice.
Good afternoon, Mayor Garnett Johnson.
Good afternoon, I'm Tina Slendak, District 7 Commissioner.
General Counsel.
Call for Howard State Representative, 129.
Lynn Heffner, State Representative for Georgia House District 130.
Brian Prin, give on Brian Prin's House District 130.
All right. Again, thank everyone for coming today. We have a number of priorities that our governing body has previously discussed that we want to bring before our delegation, so that we can kind of see where we want to move forward with these respective items. So again, I will refer everybody to the actual agenda that you should have in your hand. We do have Senator Max Burns, as well as Senator Harold Jones, that are joining us via screen, so they're looking, as well as a couple of our commissioners, including Commissioner Pulliam, who is also joining us via stream. This event is being, this discussion and work session is being streamed, so that the actual public could also benefit from seeing our discussion today. We're going to go ahead and get started. The first item that we have on our agenda is our 911 Fee Study, and we're going to ask Danny Dunlap to come and talk about that.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. So, a little bit of background as far as the 911 Fee Study. On your devices, all your phones, your landlines, your voice over internet, your cellphones, a dollar fifty of that goes to the Department of Revenue. And also for the prepaid, if you go and buy a prepaid card from any of the retailers, a dollar fifty is also taken from that. But that current fee structure does not fully support the 911 operations, everything that goes within the 911 center. In addition to that, what's on the horizon is next generation 911. That's the ability for individuals out in the field to, any citizen or visitor to Richmond County, if they called 911, they can send picture, video, text, any of that digital multimedia that we would be able to receive, and then also send that out to any kind of first responder out in the field. It would also give us better location accuracy information for people that are calling. Because, believe it or not, right now, I could order an Uber, and it can pick me up right outside the building here, but if I called 911, it may not have my certain exact location. So it's important that the fee study is something that's looked at. When it comes on a statewide level, the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority, it's GCA, it's a subsection of GMA, they put appropriations requests in 2024 to request funding for a comprehensive fee study for 911. It would look at what the current costs are and how it's covering the current systems. It would also look at implementation and maintaining the next generation 911 systems, because as we know, we can implement something, but can we continue to pay for it moving forward? It would also take a look at what the true needs of the system are and how that can be maintained moving forward. And as is mentioned here, the Georgia Resilience Disaster Mitigation Study Committee Report also recommended consideration for funding the infrastructure for next gen 911. So briefly, you know, our consideration for the legislative request is to support GCA's request for funding a study committee to conduct the comprehensive fee study for the 911. Any questions? The warden and I said we were going to have a raise to see who could do it fastest, but I wasn't trying to go too fast, I promise.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from anyone in regards to the support for our 911 Fee Study? Thank you. All right, now we will turn to our Richmond County Correctional Institution to discuss our inmate fees, and we will ask Evan Joseph to do a discussion of that, who's our RCCI Warden.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, last year, we were fortunate, we were given a $2 increase for us to house the state inmates. Prior to 2024, in 2022, we received an additional $2. Prior to 2022, the last increase was about maybe 20 years prior. So therein lies the challenge, the rate of the increases having kept up with the rate of inflation. So that's what we get to the asking for, additional increase to house the state offenders. Our current layout, as far as the number of inmates we house is 230. Average day cost to house inmate is $63. Currently, the state pays $24 of that 63, which leaves the City of Augusta $39 a day to house the offenders. All right, again, the cost of inflation, the rise in inflation, specifically our food costs, our medical costs, that's what we heard. And that's why the need for an additional amount to house the offenders will be beneficial for the City of Augusta. This is just a breakdown of what we've done in the last three years. I think of all the slides, this is perhaps the most telling. The state prisons, the state pays $52.90 a day to house the offenders. The private prisons are paying a rate from $62 to $64 a day. The Sheriff Department, they pay $30 to house the offenders, private, they're going to the diagnostic centers. And county facilities, which we one of them, we only pay $24 a day to house the offenders. So therein lies the issue for the City of Augusta. This slide shows the trend within the last few years. Sad to say, but the rate is going up, the number of offenders that are being incarcerated. So we are projecting that the trend is going to continue in the future. And this slide is the layout of all the county facilities in the entire state. There are 21 of us throughout the state of Georgia. All of us are set up differently throughout the state. The last slide, if you could turn to that one, this shows a breakdown of how many offenders are housed at each county facility. So our ask is, realistically, if we go by trend, the last few years, we got increments of $2. We requested $2 at the low end, but realistically and ideally, we would like to get about $5. I think that would put us in a better position to deal with the high income rates and inflation costs, specifically our medical and food costs. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
What is your capacity? I know you said you had 230 up.
Right, so we could house up to 350 offenders, but our contract with the state is 230.
Okay, so you're housing these those quarter state?
Yes, sir.
And you basically asked for more money on that contract?
Yes, sir.
So that you can keep up with the cost of living?
Yes, sir.
That's not easy. And, okay, so, again, I guess my next question, is there a, missed a couple of other counties that have similar facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Is this a request as a toll, or is this a request from Richmond County?
I'm glad you answered that question. So my colleagues, though, they say they have the same issues like they have. They, the majority are asking for $10 for them. And that's the ask. I think-
Why don't we ask them for $2?
Well, keeping with tradition, what we've done in the last few years, that's the low end, but ideally, I'd say five to 10 would be more beneficial for the City of Augusta.
Great. Now, is there a, and I'm just trying to make sure that we take on what we need to take on. Is there someone, another agency that represents yourself, these other counties, that's going to come with this request?
I don't believe so.
Or is this a separate request from Richmond County to Department of Corrections?
Right, so-
I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
Right, so, right, so we contract with the Department of Corrections. We house, we house their offenders. But traditionally, each county, we lobby on our own for the increases. But the Department of Corrections is the umbrella agency.
Department of Corrections.
Yes, sir.
And I know the governor is just planning on allocating some funds, a lot of funds to them, and my question, well, yeah, I guess my question is, are our concerns wrapped up in that study? What do you know?
That I don't know.
Okay, good, we'll, we may add this to it.
Okay.
Representative Heffner. Heffner. So, to the point of Mr. Chairman, there is a $600 million request that the governor has prepared. Do you at some point know exactly when, or if, or how much of that allocation would support the services that you're requesting, or how exactly does that work? And how can we support an additional ask, if that's what he's already determined he's going to allocate?
Right, so traditionally, when, I guess when the budget is put together, the Department of Corrections, they lobby for what they need. Traditionally, they don't lobby for the county facilities. So in the past, each county would go up and they lobby for X amount of dollars. And last year, like I said, we were fortunate, we were able to get $2 to house the offenders additionally. So there's no big one, I guess, take small, I think each county lobby on their own. If that answers the question.
I guess, may I help? With the $2 there, you got last year, how was that allocated? What line item? Did it come through Department of Corrections as, in a bundle, or did it come down just to Richmond County?
Yeah, I think it came as a bundle. All 21 of us got the $2 increase. All 21 county facilities got the $2 increase.
Quick answer question, additional question, the, you mentioned the 21 counties.
Yes, sir.
Would it be the same for all of them?
Yes, sir.
Just curious, Muskogee, which is similar size, is, they have one at twice as many inmates? What's, is there an explanation on why some counties like Bibb don't have one that are similar in size, and then others have one? I saw one in Chatham County, which is another similar size.
I think it's up to the municipality, they decide what number they want to house, and they go into contract with the Department of Corrections. They don't set, you know, I guess, right answer. Each municipality determine how many offenders they want to house, and they work with the state for that contract. When I first started, there were upwards of 30 county facilities, now it's dropped to 21.
How did they make the decision to close in nine counties? Like maybe Chatham and Bibb and others?
The municipality decided that they didn't want, you know, have to deal with the offenders anymore, and they did away with the contract.
Where did they get it, the state facility?
Yeah, they went back to the state, or they went to the other county facilities that had their offenders. To give you an example, years ago, I think two of us closed, and we were able to absorb 15 additional offenders. We were at 215 years ago without 230, because we absorbed 15 additional offenders from a facility that closed.
If we theoretically lose $39 a day per offender, it would be accepting the ones that were-
Right.
Obviously, I have a lot to learn.
Any more questions?
Are there any additional questions in regard? Okay, Commissioner Gilfoul.
Yes, sir. This is what the legislature, what we're going to see on the horizon. President, RCCI, it's a 60-year-old facility, and it's outdated, antiquated, it's falling apart. If the governor is willing to either build new facility, because it's going to, we're going to have to face this challenge here of coming up before too long. So if y'all would keep that in the horizon to start the conversation on that one.
And thank you, Mayor Proton. I tell you, that's really what I'm trying to get at here, is to try to figure out, is there a way we can put this request in something that's already moving? I'm just, at least this is my first time here, and I'm pretty sure the rest of my colleagues as well. And now we're back in, because the governor's already has some idea of what he wants to fund, or what the state's to fund. And I was hoping we were already in that. Whatever we're asking for is already in, but we're not sure if it is or not, so we have to do some research on that. And if it's in, hopefully, we can get a raise across the board, but if not, we'll have to sort of figure out, can we add this to it? So that's, we're behind on this right now. Okay, because this is our first time here.
Yeah, but what I can tell you, sir, the discussion has already started. So all of my colleagues, they've already reached out to their delegations as well. This is a big issue. I think we'll be faced with-
Yeah, and I agree, it's the issue, and we want to help solve it. However, we're just trying, again, I'm just trying to think out loud where this thing needs to go, and if it's something already moving that we can push them, or is it already in there? And based on what I've heard, you say it's probably not in there, because it's coming from the county. Your other colleagues have probably already got something in there already.
Right.
So we need to catch up. Thanks.
I'd like to ask Marcy, what are you hearing in terms of this conversation? Are you hearing anything that the governor is doing? Anything? I'm not sure. You've got the state.
The governor included $600 million in his, in the Department of Corrections budget, and that's primarily for increasing infrastructure and some cost of living increases and salaries for people who work in the state prisons. In the past, the $2 increase has been a line item, a separate line item in the budget. It's come from the House, and y'all were nice enough in the House last year to put it in the supplemental, and then to put it in the 20, in the big budget. So I think the hope is, is $2 is a great start, we're very appreciative, but obviously, the county institutions are way behind the reimbursement rate for the state and for the private prisons. So the hope is to keep increasing it, so that there's some parity, to give counties incentive to keep their facilities open, and help the state with the housing of the additional prisoners.
So, Marcy, thank you so much for that feedback. I guess ultimately, what we're trying to understand is based upon Commissioner Gilfoul's request in terms of a firm ask. We don't have data, a performer, analysis. We don't have a full picture of what is needed, where the shortfall is, and direction in which we're going. So we don't have a plan to have an ask. And the governor has already set aside an allocation with perhaps some information about what specifically will be assigned for those funds. So if in fact, there are other individuals across the state that have already prepared an ask, if you could be willing to provide us with a sampling, so that we can at least understand what direction we need to go. We may even be able to pair that with another county. Just say, for instance, if it's Muskogee County, who is a community very similar to ours. If in fact, they have prepared data, if they have a particular study, or they're working with their lobbyists, we will be happy to pair that, so that we can work together in tandem, which we have a better chance. Without knowing and taking a shot in the blind, it is really, really difficult to place that upon us, for us to manage with 177 other legislators, you know, vying for the governor's ear and for his time for their county. And so now, we would have to go and do the research to put together an ask, and we've just been handed this today. So if in fact, Marcy, if you could work with our corrections facility to see exactly what our need is, so that we understand, and we might not be able to walk away with everything, but we may be able to walk away with a something. Does that make sense? Thank you very much.
Any additional questions? All right. I think Dan will get you.
He did.
Okay. The next item is something that we will actually be tag teaming. Myself and Mr. Brown will be tag teaming, so we'll go ahead and start. Just, all right. In addition to Augusta's potential, of course, I'd like to start first by doing what we're talking about when we speak on the hotel and motel tax. Of course, we realize that this is a tax that is paid by our visitors to the great Garden City. And the visitors that stay in our hotels, and our motels, and our short-term rentals. This tax is limited as a percentage of what they are actually paying. And so the purpose of this tax is actually to grow our local economy by attracting more people to Augusta, Georgia. Our current hotel motel tax is 6%. Our local tax was in place before the current laws governing these taxes, so we are grandfathered in with this rate. The current state statutes allow the hotel motel tax rates up to 8%. So many of the other counties and cities have moved up to that 8%. We are here today to talk about the possibility of actually raising Augusta's tax from 6% up to that 8% rate. Benny and I will be sharing how that would look, and some of the reasons why that could benefit our community actually as a whole. The enabling legislation for this tax is, of course, OCGA 48-13-51B, and lays out a very specific way that the proceeds from this 8% tax must be distributed. So it's a little different than how we currently do it with our 6% tax. 37.5% of the funds are unrestricted and go to the local government. Those funds can be used for any legal general fund purposes. Then we have 43.75% that must be used for tourism, conventions, and trade shows. And 18.75% that must be used for tourism product development. And this is a little different from the other way that we were just talking about in regards to our 6% tax allocation. So I want to break down what these terms mean, and what the allocations could actually look like for Augusta. 43.75% of the proceeds from the tax is required, again, to go to the tourism, our conventions, and our trade shows. These funds must be spent by what they call the Destination Marketing Organization, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, of course, and in our case, that is Destination Augusta. This is similar to the current 6% tax, and there are specific restrictions on how Destination Augusta can and can't spend those funds to promote our community. For example, they can pay for promotional efforts and publicity, and they can operate a welcome center, but they can't pay for fireworks and festivals. Again, I will let Benny speak to all of the Destination Augusta's work in more in depth in a moment. Up to 18.75% of the funds must be used for tourism product development. This portion is about creating physical attractions and facilities that appeal to visitors and will be used by our visitors. The local government can direct these funds as needed, as long as it is used for that purpose, and the funds can be used for capital costs or operating costs. In our case, the 6% tax currently supports our Coliseum Authority, and that will continue under the 8% tax. Our allocation to the Coliseum Authority actually exceeds this 18.75%, so we would definitely satisfy their respective requirement. So, let's compare the allocation of our current 6% tax to the proposed 8% tax. Currently, the proceeds of our tax are split 50/50 between Destination Augusta and the Coliseum Authority. If you think our current rate is six pennies, three pennies go to Destination Augusta, and the other three pennies go to the Coliseum Authority. In 2024, that was approximately $4 million each. Under the 8% tax, the percentage has shifted a little, but the total revenue, of course, increases because we're charging 8% as opposed to the 6%. So as mentioned, Destination Augusta would still would receive 43.75% of the 8% tax. So they are moving from three to about three and a half pennies, actually. So they will get a little more money. If we use 2024 numbers to estimate, that would be an increase of about $608,000 for them. We anticipate on holding the Coliseum Authority at their current allocation. So as I said, they still get about three pennies. So their funding would not be affected either way. The remainder of the new tax revenue, or about a penny and a half, would actually be available to Augusta, the City of Augusta government, as unrestricted revenue. A conservative projection, which is based on the 2024 numbers, is about $2 million for the City of Augusta coffers. So there is definitely an opportunity here for both Destination Augusta and the City of Augusta to generate new revenue from our visitors. So you may ask, what are you going to do with the $2 million that you may be giving to the City of Augusta? Some of those potential uses for allocations is the restoration of our boathouse, improvements or maintenance for the aquatic center, improvements or maintenance for our Diamond Lakes Regional Park, and our larger regional recreation centers, and even expanding our recreational program, like more after-school activities. Again, these are just a few big picture suggestions that can be utilized, that those funds can be utilized for, just to get your minds working on all possibilities of utilizing those funds. If we do pursue the 8% tax and are successful, the commission could then make decisions about, of course, where to direct those funds. Now, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Benny Brown to speak more about Destination Augusta Park, and this, and how the importance of the visitor economy is to Augusta overall. Benny?
Thank you, Administrator. And good afternoon, everyone, to our state and local officials. As I was preparing for this, I just thought this, regardless of what happens here, this is just exciting to be in a conversation, to partner with the city on the vision and the belief that working together, we can make some amazing things happen for the people of Augusta and for the businesses of Augusta, and that just feels really good. Exploring a 2% increase in our hotel motel tax, to me, translates to putting Augusta in the best possible position to continue growing, thriving, and competing in Georgia's visitor economy, because, and my team knows, I'm a competitor, and I always say, we want to be a player to be reckoned with when it comes to tourism in this state. Next slide, please. Our local hospitality industry has a proud story to tell. We put a lot of people to work as an industry, filling more than 26,000 jobs in our metro region. Our visitor economy continues to grow, and it brings in new dollars. These are dollars that come from outside of our community. And we're definitely doing something right with our current lodging tax investments. And our commitment is that, our accountability is that additional investments will bring additional growth. We have a short video we'd like to share that I think reinforces the fact that tourism is a well-oiled machine. It's a well-oiled machine, working hard for Augusta and bringing a return on investment. So please, please enjoy this just for a couple of minutes.
Welcome to Augusta, Georgia, where we celebrate diversity, our rich history, and vibrant culture.
where we celebrate diversity, a rich history, and vibrant culture. And everyone has a story to tell. I'm Giovanni Jones, and it feels good to be in Augusta. Your friends at Destination Augusta, the Augusta Sports Council, and Film Augusta develop and promote our community, inspiring people to have unforgettable experiences. This is your invitation to experience Augusta's Southern hospitality as we roll out the welcome mat and all the ways these organizations attract business for our community. Visit Augusta dot com. Our experience guide and our social media channels reached about seven point nine million people in the last year, helping visitors explore what our city has to offer. Augusta and Company, our city's experience center, is where our Augusta experts connect visitors and locals with places to eat, drink, and have fun. It's also a place to shop local goods, taste local brews, and see local art. This year, Augusta co-celebrated its fifth anniversary. Even our newly expanded regional airport has a fun, funky Augusta vibe with vibrant art in the jet bridges and baggage claim. Did you know Destination Augusta, the Augusta Sports Council, and Film Augusta are funded by a portion of the local lodging tax? That's right. Visitors fund our efforts to market, promote, and develop new ways for people to enjoy Augusta. Together, we turned that lodging tax into eight hundred fifty-four million dollars in visitor spending last year alone. Visitor spending is big business in Augusta. In twenty-twenty-three, our leisure and hospitality industry put twenty-six thousand four hundred neighbors, friends, and family members from our community to work, making it the fifth-largest industry in our region. Destination Augusta's sales and servicing teams work with hotels and local businesses to attract conventions, trade shows, conferences, meetings, and reunions to Augusta, and ensure that they have the time of their lives and want to come back each year. The Augusta Sports Council does the same for sporting events, turning our waterways, roads, and sports complexes into proving grounds for personal bests and champions. Film Augusta rolls out the red carpet for the bright lights and camera crews of movies and TV shows, connecting them with locations that set the stage for incredible stories. What does that all mean for you? Each Augusta Richmond County household keeps eight hundred forty-seven dollars per year in their bank accounts because of tax generated by visitors. Augusta is a thriving community, rich with experiences that attract people, and we want more people to know about us and come and see us. We work with local attractions to create authentic Augusta experiences that immerse groups in the stories and individuals past and present that showcase our city. And we launched a series of virtual passes and trails to guide locals and visitors to area business, for freshly brewed coffee, outdoor fun, and to connect with Augusta legend James Brown. Our marketing and communications team reached over three point five billion people so far this year through advertising and media stories. We accomplish this through media partnerships with influencers, writers, and TV personalities who share our stories of people and places and those authentic experiences that are uniquely Augusta. It may feel good to be in Augusta today, but the future looks even brighter. I'm here with Destination Augusta President and CEO Benny Brown to share the vision for what's to come.
It has been an exciting year in Augusta with the renovation of the beautiful Bell Auditorium and groundbreaking of the new James Brown Arena. Hotels are undergoing renovation, and we're welcoming new hotel construction to accommodate the growing number of visitors. And more fun is coming. We're planning to break ground on an urban outdoor adventure center on the Riverwalk in the coming months. It'll bring lots of people and just a new energy to our city's waterfront along the Savannah River. It really does feel good to be in Augusta. Come see Augusta.
The feel-good city.
And see for yourself all the good things we have to offer, and where every visit becomes a story.
Thank you. So hopefully the glitch won't go against my time. But I will, I will move on as the next slide comes forward. And Administrator Allen already mentioned this. It's been mentioned, there are literally hundreds of communities throughout Georgia who are maximizing this levy on overnight accommodations. Again, it's basically a pass-through paid for by visitors. But many, many cities other than Augusta are using this to boost local economic growth. And to me, I think to all of us in the tourism industry, Augusta deserves the same opportunity. This slide shows you just a snippet of some of the cities, some of the communities, uh, more than a hundred thirteen around the state that collect the tax at eight percent. Our two direct competing cities are Columbus and Macon. We compare to them in a lot of different ways, even in our assets. But you see, from A to W, from Albany to Woodstock, they are collecting that eight percent tax. It's reasonable that you would have questions. Why should you support this request? It's reasonable you should have questions of what would be the benefits for this increase if we had this increase? And I'm speaking at a high level. I might, uh, not be providing what the Administrator thought I would, but I'm not getting into the weeds on this. Just at a high level, I think some of the opportunities, you see on this slide, I identified three general areas. Number one, we'd certainly extend, expand our sales and marketing outreach to bring in more business to our hotels and to our facilities. Uh, we have several hoteliers here today. I really thank you for being here. Our hotel ecosystem is not a one-size-fits-all. There's economy properties, mid-tier properties, upper-tier properties. All are providing opportunities for us to recruit target markets from leisure travelers like friends or families who are looking for that three-day getaway, or markets like meetings and conventions. Our sports council, my sports council counterpart is here, Michelle Pippin. And we would, uh, I think, uh, relish the opportunity to expand all we're doing in those various markets. The second point I'd make, uh, Explore Georgia, we are fortunate here in the state to have a state tourism office. And Explore Georgia is an entity we'd love to continue partnering with, but take advantage of some things that we just financially can't take advantage of now. Trade shows they might attend, we could use those as sales missions to meeting planners and the sports organizers. The second point would be certainly improve our visitor infrastructure. Administrator Allen spoke about that. But this is about enhancing maybe some of our existing tourism products, clean up some things that we have that need to be enhanced a little bit more, but also the opportunity to bring new products online. It's all about keeping Augusta appealing. And then my last point in general, we really need to up our game with more resources to recruit film, music, digital entertainment opportunities. Augusta is good for film, film is good for Augusta. That would certainly be one of the areas we could expand. This next slide is the last slide I'll just comment on. We don't make this ask of you lightly. The credibility of our industry, the credibility of our organization is extremely important to us. We believe that what gets measured gets done. And we pride ourselves as a very intentional, a very strong, data-driven organization. We'll always use best practices in putting these funds to work for the benefit of this industry and this community. And we do look forward to this ongoing conversation. The remaining two slides, just simply the next slide points to just some things we can have a conversation about. We don't have to stop and do it today, but what we think are some benefits overall to the city of an increased two percent tax. And this last slide just shows you the process and who's engaged with the process. It does kick off with the commission having a resolution, and then our legislative validation, uh, General Assembly members taking this to the body for a vote, and then it comes back before our commission for an ordinance. So again, thank you for hearing us sound on this. We thank you for your consideration. I do believe there is certainly the opportunity again for us to get out of this market and just be competitive in the state of Georgia across Southeast and nationally and globally. Let's take over the world. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions in regards to the hotel motel?
Yeah, we got a quick, uh, couple of, uh, South Carolina. That's being so close. Where, where, where do we, where do we?
In North Augusta, their total lodging tax rate is twelve percent.
Okay, got you. Yes, sir. And, uh, I saw you had the use of these funds. It was raised for one thing, and I think Administrator had them going for other things. Are they, again, because I'm not clear. Are these funds, because they're being taxed on the hotel motel, do they have to go, could they go to the things that she's talking about, aquatic centers and things like that versus tourism and to help those?
Those are unrestricted funds specifically for the city. And I'm really pleased that the city has outlined that they will put these back into facilities. The sports council certainly needs facilities to market and bring events here. So yes, sir.
Has the, um, commission already considered a draft resolution with your ideas in terms of what facilities or what other nuances will be supported by this for us to be able to accept and go ahead and submit as a formal piece of legislation?
Not at this time. That would be something, this is the first real conversation we're having in regards to the hotel motel tax. Um, but that could be something that's done easily at one of our community meetings. If it is the will of the governing body to proceed.
I guess my question is, I saw it on the same line. You got two million going to the city and six hundred and eighty going to Destination Augusta. On those fund, on that two million unrestricted funds, you mentioned a few things like Diamond Lakes and recreation. Would those projects be predetermined before the two million on an annual basis? Or how would that, how would, how would you determine where that two million would go as a commission? It's something like this flash, you want to have some projects that we want that to go to, or would it just go into the, to the, to the general fund?
If it goes to the general fund and the governing body will on an annual basis get to allocate where those funds will be appropriated?
And if I might add, Representative Howard, I do think the Department of Community Affairs does require, uh, those items to show in that year's budget so that it tracks, um, what, what is being worked on. I think that's the case.
So currently, with the six percent, it's fifty-fifty with Destination Augusta and the Coliseum Authority. Is that right? On the six percent, three and three pennies?
Yes.
And it's a little bit mixed for us. We do have to re-grant some of the funds we get. We do get fifty percent of the pie, but our pie is divided a little bit more. We don't resolve that by operating, but.
Kind of following up on Representative Carter, Howard, when he mentioned, uh, the, uh, the amount, when the legislation is passed, is the, the percent going to Coliseum Authority going to be in that legislation? Or can that be changed in the future, up or down? Is the amount going to Destination Augusta? Are those going to be fixed? And then with flexible money, is the two million dollars unrestricted?
Um, the only flexible, yeah, pretty much would be the unrestricted funds, which will be coming to Augusta to allocate on an annual basis. We will not change anything as it relates to the Coliseum Authority at this time. And the additional, because we're going to be taking additional, we're raising the percentage to eight percent, those will bring the additional fund that will be allocated to Destination Augusta.
I see. And finally, uh, I know we, we passed Marketplace Facilitator Bill several years ago. We ought to get the exemption for our one week of short-term rentals that offered those home in Augusta. But, you know, it, it does apply to most of those, although some, some entities seem to be getting out of pay of the sales tax or the hotel motel tax, even large companies. Are we, are we following up to make sure we're getting our current six or future eight percent? Or maybe that's something we can look into to make sure we're getting it. The last thing I guess is I, I do have a little concern that the Coliseum Authority may need, along with Destination Augusta going up from four to four point seven, the needs of that new fantastic combination facility of the Bell and the JBA. It's, I have a feeling that we're going to have some operational needs there that may be, and I, and I don't know if this is something we can change later or once it's decided in this local legislation and passed, is it's fixed? I don't know, Marcy, you've had a lot to, you've worked with this before, actually.
Yeah. So the, the statutory provisions for how you distribute hotel motel tax at every level are pretty heavily prescribed. The eight percent does have certain percentages that need to be allocated certain way, certain ways. But like, for example, the unrestricted funds, the local governing authority can decide how those funds are allocated, um, once they come to the city. But the, um, the percentages for what has to go to the DMO, there's a minimum floor there, and then how those DMO funds can be spent. And then, of course, with the Coliseum Authority, you've got bonds outstanding. So there's going to be a certain requirement to keep the funding coming to pay off those, um, those bonds and that debt. Of course, the revenue source for that is currently would continue to be hotel motel tax. But there are statutory prescriptions on how those funds can be allocated. And then as long as the commission stays within the requirements of state law, they can reallocate funds accordingly as needs shift.
And last, currently, you say we're grandfathered like a number of other cities at our current rate. Is that, um, is that, do we lose anything in our grandfather status, grand, you know, prior commitment status by going to an eight? Or is it, we don't really lose anything?
So states have been, I mean, local governments have been all over the board with hotel motel tax. It's one of the most complicated statutory provisions in the entire OCGA. And when the, the state decided about eight years ago to move up to an eight percent, everybody who was at six percent was able to stay where they were. And then those communities that decided to move to eight percent came under this new statutory framework as a benefit for getting that increased percentage collection. So there's no, there's no real downside to moving away from the six percent and up to the eight percent. There's a little bit of loss of flexibility for the commission because there are certain percentages that need to be allocated to the DMO or whatever. But the benefit is that they, is that the commission gets more money.
Thank you. Benny and Miss Allen wanted to, are we, are we hoping to get this accomplished this legislative session? Or is this just introducing the conversation for a different session?
My answer would be yes.
I meant in this session.
Yes, it would be to get it done this session.
This session, okay. Yeah.
And, and I think, yes.
And it's, that would be great before Massachusetts.
And it's a, and it's a piece of local legislation. So it works differently from a general bill, which, you know, takes, which requires a much different timeframe and different level of support. If it's a local bill, then we can, we can work on a shortened, um, timeframe to get all of the questions answered at the local level and address all the questions, of course, of the delegation.
Okay. Well, I mean, if this, if, if we're pretty confident we want to go ahead and make this ask, I would suggest that we go ahead and get this on to agenda for next Tuesday. We have until tomorrow at nine, ten to have an agenda submission. But of course, even if it's an addendum, I'm sure there won't be any opposition. If we want to get it done this session, I would have no position to go ahead and get the ball rolling on agenda item.
Any other questions in regards to the hotel motel?
Hello. So, uh, listening to this tax discussions, right now, if we see our. I'm Jigarami. I have like eight, nine, eight, nine hotels in this area, Richmond and Columbia County. Now, if we see the tax discussion, Columbia County right now has thirteen percent of total tax. Our county has fourteen point five percent of tax plus dollar one transportation fee. That is on, that is for room per night. So if I sell a room at hundred dollar, I'm taking one dollar transportation fee. So that is one percent of my revenue. On top of that, I'm paying fourteen point five percent state and county tax. Last April, we increased our, uh, sales tax by point five percent. So now the sales tax is eight point five percent, and county tax is six percent as of today. Plus, we pay dollar one transportation fee, plus we pay dollar five hotel motel fee. Now, North Augusta and Eagan County, like Benny said, has twelve percent total tax. No extra fee. Columbia County also has just thirteen percent tax and no transportation fee. So already, as for us, we are paying dollar one and point five percent extra. That is already one point five percent extra over above all the counties that are paying. Out of two hundred and eighty-nine counties in Georgia, if we are counting hundred and thirteen counties as eight percent tax, we do understand that, but we are already paying one point five percent more than other counties that does not have this flat fee or point five percent increase in the state tax. Only Richmond County is eight point five percent state tax for hotel motel. So we, we feel like already we are paying that tax. So I, I don't, I mean, the total tax after the increase would be sixteen point five percent plus dollar one transportation fee. So at an average room rate of hundred dollars, it would be seventy point five percent. So at an average room rate of hundred dollars, it would be seventy point five percent tax for us. Compared to all the Georgia county, we would be the highest tax-paying people for the, I am collecting the hotel motel tax. So, and then, I mean, I know it increases our revenue occupancy-wise, there would be an increase, but what we want is like, even, this is a different aspect, but if this funds or some of these increases can go to the security of our hotels, it would be better for us. We are not seeing that funds going towards the security. Right now, if I need to hire a security for my hotel, I pay to sheriff department thirty dollar an hour. So if I need to secure my hotel, why do I pay there? If I'm paying all these increases.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And just for clarification, I think Marcy, with Atlanta was right?
I think Atlanta's at eight point nine percent, so certainly...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm out of two eighty-nine counties, I'm just saying that we would be in like top five, ten counties that would be paying like sixteen point five percent, seventeen point five percent total tax.
You wouldn't be the highest, certainly wouldn't be the highest, and you'd be in very good company with a lot of the other hub cities that attract conventions and visitors.
Yeah, I mean, we do understand that. See, it's coming from visitors and going to the county, so it's not like we are earning anything out of it, but it's just being in competition with the counties around, right? We would, we would feel that a lot of business would go to the counties on, on the other side of the river or Columbia County, where we have long-term construction people or people who are not the leisure business, but the regulars. When they see that contracts, it's a lot of difference. On the yearly fees, I mean, if you see with the long-term contracts that we have, like we have, my hotels have Department of Defense contract, I have the VA contract for the area. So if I see that tax exemptions and that, I mean, it's, it's going to take some occupancy that would decrease for our hotels in Richmond County, that's what I feel, but I mean, because that business might go to the county, Columbia County, or, or in the North Augusta area hotels.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or comments? All right. Thank you, Benish.
Thank you so much.
Again, we appreciate our delegation joining us today, of course, our governing bodies. We look forward to further discussion on some of these items. Marcy is going to be working very diligently on some of the asks that our governing bodies need priority, or some of the priorities that were previous priorities that we're bringing out to fruition with our delegation. Hopefully, we can give the respective support that we will need in Atlanta to get these things done, hopefully before Massachusetts. So again, we appreciate everyone's time today, we appreciate everyone in attendance. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you wanted to say any comments closing us out?
Well, I want to thank everyone for being here. I, I think this legislation is important, these priorities, in order to move our community forward. And so for the record, as I travel, one of the last things I worry about is the fees that are associated with my hotel room. If I go to Savannah or Washington DC, I realize that unfortunately, the cost of travel includes those fees. Those dollars can be greatly used throughout our community, so I highly encourage that if there's an opportunity for us to raise more revenue for this government, for us to do more things for our constituents, it's an interest. But thank everyone for being here, and we look forward to getting these, that's in the items, done, these legislative priorities done in Atlanta. Thank you to the delegation, thank you.
Again, thank you, everyone, we appreciate everybody's attendance today. Hope you have a good afternoon.